The regular, the committee meeting of the Madera County Groundwater Sustainability Agency. It is 1:30 PM. We'll call this meeting to order and we will start with the flag salute. Hey, first item on the agenda is public comment. This is an opportunity for comment on items, not on this agenda. This is also a place to suggest topics for future meetings. Comments can be five minutes or less. Come on up. No, and push the button. See the green light? Oh. One sec. There we go.
Really close. Okay, now it's, I think it's working. Hey, I am delighted that later in the meeting, we're going to see the allocations that go out to 2040 sustainability. That's important for all of us. What I would like to also see at the same time would be how are we doing versus our allocation? So we've now had allocations for four years. Not all of them have been in effect. You know, the first two years were not really counting, if you will. And so this is the third year that counts, and now there's about to be 15 or 16 years that really count, and it's going to go down quickly. I have never been in a situation where I've been given an allocation and not given the results against that allocation. And I think it's very important that we as growers see how we're doing basin wide and sub basin wide. And it's an easy thing to do, by the way. I mean, it's every farm unit and everybody's usage, and it's just an algebraic equation. It's not hard to get to. But I think what it will do is, and I think, I think we're probably well under right now, and I think that might be part of the fear of not showing how we're doing. By the way, staff is well aware of my feelings, so this is not that I'm saying something new. But I think there's another side of it. I think by showing how we're doing, we create trust. And you know, that's one of the things that really hasn't existed between our growers and all of you, and is this level of trust. And I would love to see it start with, look, here's some good news. And then, no, I hope nobody takes it like, oh, we're way ahead of schedule, or anything. That would be a mistake. It would, everybody needs to take it as, wow, they trusted us enough to give us the information. So thank you. That's what I would like to see coming up.
Thank you, Mark. Thank you for your comments.
Hi, hi. Good afternoon. Larkin Harmon. I grow out on the west side and the president of Clayton Water District. And I just would like to propose maybe an ad hoc committee for different uses. Perhaps when there's, when there's policies that maybe warrant a little bit more discussion and maybe more of a conversational atmosphere. I think that a lot of the farmers have knowledge that we can share. And since the solutions and, and the results of the solutions are all, you know, based on what we're going to do or not going to do. If we have like a little bit more say, I think, in some of the policy shaping and some of the ideas, maybe before it gets to you guys or before the committee. I just think that there's a lot of people in the room and even in the county that would be willing to bat some of these ideas around. And we have a little bit more in-depth knowledge of certain topics that maybe staff or you guys don't have, or even the consultants come from a different point of view completely than a lot of us. So I was thinking that maybe there would be good times to have an, an ad hoc committee for certain issues to maybe further discuss. Think, oh, and one more public comment. We spoke several months ago about getting a monetary budget update, perhaps maybe every couple of quarters. And so I just thought maybe we'd be able to put that on the agenda for the next couple of meetings coming up.
Thank you for that. Thank you. Thanks. Welcome.
Good afternoon. My name is Michelle Lasquardy, and I would like to request that the Department of Water, Natural Resources and Water for Madera County begin or have, or open the forum for understanding what the process and the framework will be for qualifying for domestic well mitigation in the Madera Sub Basin. And hopefully, and I would also like to request that the individuals that are paying for the domestic well mitigation, which are those that are the property owners of the, of the enrolled acres in the Madera Sub Basin, would have the opportunity to provide input to that process. And I would certainly volunteer to do that if one is looking for a grower to do so. But in general, I think all the growers should have the opportunity to understand how one qualifies for domestic well mitigation. And just as Larkin said earlier, many times we have insight to a process or perhaps an effect that took place in our county that others may not have, having been out on the, out on the ground and farming in certain areas. So thank you for listening, and I look forward to hearing about that.
Thank you. Do we have anyone else with public comment? Do we have anyone online?
Yes, there's one online. Go ahead, Brad.
Hi, yeah, you know, as you know, on July 15th, the board passed a domestic well mitigation fee in the Madera Sub Basin. And then recently, Madera ID on August 25th voted in a special board meeting to withdraw from the sub basin wide program. And just want to make sure that the growers get an update on how that may affect the... Excuse me?
Brad Samuelson.
Oh, we can't, we can't hear him.
You can't hear me? Hello, I'm unmuted. Can you hear me? Hello?
No worries. Please bear with us.
Okay.
Go ahead, Brad.
Okay, thank you. Yes, you know, as you know, on July 15th, the board passed a domestic well mitigation fee. And then on August 25th, Madera ID voted to withdraw from the sub basin wide program. So I just want to make sure that staff and the board are going to address that as soon as possible to let the growers know how that may affect their, that the fee that was passed. I mean, I know it was to be evaluated every year, but the, the level of impact is uncertain now. I mean, I, just from generally understanding the rate study, it's hard for me to tell how it will impact the growers. So I would appreciate that. Thank you.
Thank you. Brad, can you say your name?
Yeah, yeah, my name's Brad Samuelson, consultant from Merced.
Great. Thank you very much. Do we have anyone else? No more online? No more online? I will close public comment and move on to the next item, which is an informational item? No, I'm sorry. Item A, approval of the Madera County Groundwater Sustainability Agency Committee Meeting Minutes for August 5th, 2025. Director McCauley, do you have any questions or comments? Do we have any public comment on the minute, on the minutes? I heard a ding. What was that? Nothing? Okay, I'll close public comment, break back for action. And I'll second that, and we'll have a roll call vote.
Director McCauley?
Yes.
Director Gonzalez?
Yes.
Vote passes 2-0?
Thank you. Next item is an information item, results on measurement methods and accounting platform questionnaire and staff recommendation with grower feedback. Stephanie.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Stephanie and Agneson, Director of Water and Natural Resources, ready to share the PowerPoint. And just noting here, we did move to a new program today. And so we're using the old numbers from the agenda as well as the new numbers in the new format. So content has not changed, but that's what the old format versus new format is.
Thank you.
Okay, just some general background on this. You know, we've been at this for quite a while. What's driving this is two contracts for measurement methods that expire at the end of this calendar year, and then the need to at least freshen our RFP and look and see what other services are available and potentially what cost savings might be there. So we issued an RFP or request for proposal in May. We received seven proposals. Two were for measurement services, and five were different accounting platforms. In July, we had public presentations here at the committee meeting, and we collected questions from growers and then gave growers through the end of July to review the proposals, recorded presentations and responses. We gave a quick update last month. And then in this month, what we're coming to you with is a staff recommendation based on the grower feedback and the questionnaire. After this point, we would start our contract negotiation process, which does involve consultation with IT, since both of these services have an online component, and then a target date of starting in January. So I'm going to share the results of the grower questionnaire. It was only three questions, so we'll look at each of them. The first question is, what is your preferred satellite measurement method? So what we saw here is that just over a majority, 52% preferred Hydrasat, formerly what was called ERA Watch. We have a smaller number for land IQ. And then significantly, although we are asking about satellite measurement methods, we do have people wanting to make sure that your board knows they appreciate meters as an option. So those folks were, were writing in an option for meters. So you can see here, we have the majority choosing Hydrasat. The second question was asking whether they supported the GSA funding more than one satellite measurement method. I think one way we framed this before is what we're doing now is maximizing choices for people, but that is always, that is also maximizing how much things cost. So perhaps not surprisingly, we have the majority saying, no, they would support only one satellite measurement method. And then the last question revealed a little bit more complicated results, but this is asking which groundwater accounting platform was preferred. So this was a new service that several growers asked to be added to this RFP to begin investigating whether there were any cost savings available, like would, for example, some of our measurement methods pair with a groundwater accounting platform? That ended up not being the case, but here are the results. So you do have a significant amount saying they're not interested in a groundwater accounting platform, at least at the moment. And then you have three that are about the same, both the California Water Data Consortium, Groundwater Accounting Platform, Four Creeks Basin Safe, and the David's Engineering H2O Tracker with Remote Sensor. So using the results of the questionnaire, we came to a couple of conclusions as, as staff. So I don't think you can ask people questions and then not take their feedback. So what we did see is that a majority prefer Hydrasat, formerly ERA Watch. And so that is the contract that we would suggest beginning negotiations with. We've chosen the three years that brings the greatest cost savings. It also decreases the number of times we have to do an RFP process, because as you can see, it's a fairly robust effort. And then the second suggestion is to ask the top three measurement platforms to come back, not in the format of the committee, but in a online workshop. Those tend to have better attendance than our face-to-face workshops, and it can be recorded and sort of do a demo for each of those online platforms. And then resurvey, issue another questionnaire after that point. Happy to take your questions on this item, and I should have said this is Alita Allen's item, but she is on vacation.
Thank you, Stephanie. Director McCauley, questions, comments?
Yeah, Stephanie, do you know how many respondents we got on the, the survey?
Uh, just shy of 50, like 48 out of 200 unique addresses. So a good response rate, and I think it ended up being about 35% acreage. So typically in marketing, people are excited about anything over 10%. Obviously here, people care. It's their measurement system. It's tied to their allocation and penalties. We would expect a much higher response rate, but I, we were happy with the response.
Okay. And then just to kind of minimize your recommendation, you're, you're saying enter negotiations with Hydrasat, then let's do a workshop where we can look at the accounting platforms and possibly add something in at a later time, if it makes sense.
That is correct. You, you need for January 1, a measurement system. The, the accounting platform has a much longer ramp-up time to get programmed according to our rules. So it wouldn't be in place by January 1, even if we started now.
Sure. And, and I can only imagine with the accounting platform, there's a big educational learning curve, not only for us, but for growers as well. And I guess might be difficult to give me a, I guess your instinct, maybe. Do you believe that as we increase education around the issue of accounting platform, that more growers might be open to that kind of investment? Or is it just some growers, just no way, no how, this is how I've been doing things, and I don't want to? But do you have a?
Sure, maybe both might be the answer. I do think that there's some people who don't want anything online, but I do think as people investigate and sort of see how useful an accounting platform is, that they might find it to be more useful. And that's why the staff recommendation is for a demo, not as much a sales presentation, but let's show you how it works. And usually they have kind of dummy accounts in other GSAs where they can show you what actual water use track to an allocation looks like.
Then when we're looking at, I guess, future, looking down the line a little bit, if we had an accounting platform in place, does that allow us to look at each individual farm unit from the county perspective or from the GSA perspective? Then can we get that higher level picture, kind of like snapshot that was referenced earlier around, where are we today as far as, you know, how much water we've used, how much carryover there is? Does it provide us that information completely on our side as well?
If we had the same measurement system turned on for all farm units, yes. We do not have that right now, which is why it takes a little bit more time. And I can address that in a later item. But we, it is not just like adding up the farm units because they're on three different measurement methods. You have to have the same measurement method used for all of them, and that's why it takes a little bit more time.
Thank you. One more question.
Thank you. Stephanie, and I may be jumping the, putting the cart before the horse, but is there a way to incentivize those that are on the land IQ to switch over to Hydras? Did I say that correctly? The other platform. Have you, have you started considering that, or?
I, I think you have essentially an expensive proposition. There are nine people who said they wanted land IQ, and they only wanted one measurement method. So it's not a ton. So it's not a ton, but it is a group of them. And it's unclear whether they could be swayed back or whether they would go to meters. But keeping in mind, they always have a backup option with meters and the meter people tend to take that pretty seriously. And that's my guess is they would, rather than going to hydrosat, they would just meter.
And supervisor Bobby asked the questions that I was had in my head as well. So at this time, I will open it up to public comment. See, oh, I need someone would come up. Welcome, Noah.
Noah Lopez, Madera Water Association. Thank you, everybody, for the opportunity to comment. I wanted to start off, I said this last time, but there's a lot of growers that are very interested in this. Yes, very faithful growers that make time to be here and many of our members want to be, but obviously very busy with harvest. But people are tracking this and are grateful for this committee process, so thank you. Mawa sent a letter, I think it's over there, or an email on Friday before the agenda was posted. They addressed this issue, this was the issue we kind of knew was going to be on the agenda. And many of the suggestions or the direction that we were suggesting in the letter are kind of coincidentally or not, how the, the committee or how staff is proposing to move forward with this. So I won't bore you all with recounting our, our suggestions. I'll briefly summarize though, what we were pointing out in the letter was that this RFP, like Stephanie said, has these two very distinct, related but distinct components. The actual data source, hydrosat or era watch, and then the platform. And there were five proposals or five responses to that component of the RFP. What we were suggesting, which is the staff recommendation as well, is to move forward with the, the measurement data source, to kind of spend some more time on the platform. And the reason we were suggesting this is that the platform really has the potential moving forward to be kind of the cornerstone or the, the key part of this measurement system. It's how the growers are going to interface with measurement data, with carryover, with penalties, possibly with future trading, all sorts of things, right? And it's also how the GSA could, could interface with that data as well. And so it's, it's kind of the cornerstone and as the allocation declines, which we're going to talk about on a later item of this agenda, it's going to become all the more important. And so we think it's worth spending some time to get it right and get the right fit for Madera. And we really agree that in-depth demonstrations are the way to go, letting growers kind of see what it would be like to log into this portal, to view different fields, to view farm units as a whole, to understand the allocation, that's going to be really important. And so these in-depth demonstrations, great idea, we support it. If there's any way for Mawa to help out with that workshop or post it somewhere, we would be happy to do that. The letter also suggested utilizing the most broadly used accounting platforms and, and reviewing the responses to the RFP. That appears to be groundwater accounting platform and basin safe, which is also the direction that the, the staff recommendation is headed. So that's great. In addition to those two, we would suggest considering the David's Engineering Platforms because David's has had such a impactful presence here in Madera. And they're, they've built a lot of grower confidence and kind of a two-way street trust between growers and that consulting firm. And so again, that's the direction of the staff based on the survey, so great there. But I did want to highlight maybe one area where our suggestion differed from the staff recommendation. And that's not on the platform, but on the data source component. Mawa last, last GSA committee meeting, and then again today, we would like to advocate for the continued use of land IQ. I know that thirty-five percent of the, so roughly a third of the acreage in the, in the GSA responded to that survey. And you had a greater number, you know, fifty percent, whatever it was, fifty-two percent preferring hydrosat over land IQ. I would be interested, and we asked this in the letter, what the actual split right now is of growers. I think that might be even a better, the survey are appreciative of the results, but I think that we have a way of actually determining what people prefer just by looking at what people are using. I don't know if you have that information, Stephanie, off, offhand. But just understanding how many acres are using land IQ right now, how many acres are using hydrosat? That might be helpful when you guys as a committee and as a board are deciding what the impact of taking away one of those options is. Obviously, this is a trade-off, right? Options are great, everybody loves options, options cost more money, you're paying for more services. That, that forty-sixty split on whether or not you, the, of the respondents in the survey, whether or not they wanted to see more than one measurement option. I think initially everyone would say, hey, we should just get one because it's going to save money. But then when it comes to actually taking away the one they prefer, they might have a different answer. And so we just need to think through that trade-off. And I think a good way to understand that trade-off would be to look at what the actual distribution between your watch and land IQ is right now. I'll just say, the reason that Mawa members have made it very clear to us and to myself as to why they prefer land IQ is just that they have a greater trust. They'll remember that hydrosat had some really big adjustments at the end of the year, two years in a row. So people tracked their allocation with hydrosat and then right at the end of the year, there were these big kind of unexplained adjustments, cloudy pixels, whatever it was. But there was, there's a lack of kind of confidence in that system. There's extreme confidence in land IQ, it's used really, really widely in the San Joaquin Valley for Sigma. Whereas hydrosat may not, and so just, that's, those are the core reasons why our members have made it clear they can wish to continue to see that used during the basin, we would advocate for that. I think that's kind of the main points on, on the measurement. I do want to just say, you know, whatever measurement system is, is chosen here, whatever data source is chosen, if there are two data sources or multiple data sources, we would advocate for that growers be able to use and view both those data sources. We've advocated for this for a long time. Currently, we have two data sources. Growers choose one at the beginning of the year, and then they can only view the data from that data source. And while we understand they should definitely only be able to choose one data source and have to stick with it throughout the year. Since they're paying for the data, we think they should be able to view both sets of data. And I know right now that's a bit of a technical difficulty, and that may be why it doesn't occur. But moving forward, if we have an accounting platform that's able to take in both those sets of data, even if they have to choose one to stick with it for the whole year, we think that they should be able to view both sets of data, should there be two sets of data? Since they are paying for it with that GSA fee. And then it's, I know it's the, the wish of the, the board and of staff and, but I'll just say anyway, because I think it's worth saying, flow meters continue to be available as a, as a primary measurement choice and as an appeal choice. And so we appreciate that. And I know this is a, been a really robust process, like Stephanie said, and we're very appreciative of both your guys' time and the staff time trying to get this right. So thank you.
Thank you, Noah.
It may have been more than five minutes, but I didn't see a timer, so.
Thank you. The new system, so.
No time limits on the new system. I'm speaking about the accounting.
Can you state your name?
Larkin Harmon.
Thank you.
Girl on the west side. Speaking about the accounting platforms, just to kind of bring it back, I guess to my ad hoc idea. It would be nice if maybe a couple of the platforms would, you know, let a few of the farmers try it out for a month per se and get to know the platforms. I happen to farm in Merced County too, and so I'm, I'm kind of on the county line. And they have an accounting platform over there. We got started in it, found a bunch of pitfalls in it and have been working with the developers to get more of what we need out of that platform. And so being that we have three to choose from, it might be nice to dig into it a little bit more, a little bit more than a presentation. Because when you actually start poking around on it, that's when you find what you really need or don't need. So maybe an ad hoc committee with a couple of farmers to try this out for a month would be a good idea.
Thank you, thank you very much. Do we have anyone else with public comment? Do we have anyone online? None online? I will bring it back. Stephanie, any final thoughts before we move on to the next item?
Yeah, just a, just a thought that I could bring back some costs of moving ahead with the multiple platforms. So you can take a look at that because it does, it does add up. And I would like it noted that we are looking to save some money and transition to something that's a little bit more typical. But we also understand that this is really hard and people would like something that they trust as their measurement method. So with, with your blessing, I'd like to move ahead and begin the hydrosat negotiations and then come back in October and we could look at costs and see if anyone would like to move ahead with others. Sound okay?
Yeah, I'd, I'd appreciate that approach. And then whether it's at this meeting or in the October meeting, I would be curious to know more about those adjustments that were referenced with hydrosat. At the end of the year, that last year, was it two twenty twenty or twenty twenty, like when did this occur? Do we have an expectation that those issues are resolved moving forward? A little bit more information around that kind of stuff.
Sure. I think hydrosat made two adjustments, they were both at the end of the year. And that is how they've chosen to make adjustments. It ends up working in both cases to the benefit of the grower, where they basically took, look like you were here and we're going to drop your ET here. One of the changes was called a hot pixel correction. And the other product does do corrections, but they're sort of done behind the scenes. Part of the reason you are seeing them with hydrosat is because you basically have live data. And so they do a fair amount of QA QC on their end that may result in a correction later. And I like them, I mean, no one's happy when it happens. But in this case, in both cases, it resulted in water savings for the grower.
So this is an information item. I don't believe we need a motion. Thank you very much. Next item on the agenda, consideration and recommendation to the Board of Directors to adopt a resolution establishing the farm unit annual changes policy.
Good afternoon, directors. Letitia Tapia, Water Resources Specialist. In the next few slides, I'll be covering the proposed policy for farm unit annual changes. The concept of the farm unit was introduced.
Letitia, hang on, let's see if we can get the slides up. Sorry about that. There we go. Thank you.
The concept of the farm unit was introduced by the advisory committee in twenty twenty. The farm unit is a group of parcels or irrigated land that is owned or managed by the same entity within the same farm unit zone. Farm unit formation is intended for the management of groundwater allocations in a manner that reflects rural operations. Penalties are applied to farm units that overdraft their allocation and can be attributed to specific APNs. Carryover is any unused allocation, recharge credits and purchase surface water credit. Carryover credits roll over to the next year for that farm unit. Recently, we've had several growers come to us with specific requests for splitting carryover in ways that we haven't contemplated before. So we are recommending this policy to address how credits and penalties can be distributed after a change in farm unit configuration. Currently penalties are shared by all farm units, I'm sorry, by all APNs in a farm unit and are apportioned using an approach that is based on volume of water attributable to each parcel. If penalties go unpaid, they are assessed through the treasurer tax collector's office by APN. The new penalty recommendations will give growers flexibility in distributing penalties amongst parcels in a farming it. If there is a lease sales or other written agreement with terms on a different penalty split, we will follow those terms. If there is not an agreement that spells out a penalty split, then parcel, then when parcels separate from a farm unit, we will apply the current volumetric apportionment approach to distribute penalties to the resulting farm units. When a farm unit is sold, the owner for the majority of the calendar year pays the penalty unless an agreement applies. Current practice on carryover is that credits are also shared by all parcels in a farm unit. When farm units split apart, the carryover is divided using the approach based on a volume of water attributed to each parcel. The policy recommendation on carryover will allow flexibility in the distribution of the credits between resulting farm units through a formalized lease sales or other agreement with terms that clearly describe carryover credit distribution. In the absence of these agreements, we will continue to distribute the carryover using the same volumetric apportionment approach that is already in use annually. So how the volumetric apportionment approach works is it is based on each parcel's contribution to the farm unit's overall groundwater use. When the farm unit is in carryover, the parcel that uses less water, so meaning they contributed the most to carryover, will receive a large share of the carryover credit. And when a farm unit is in penalty, the, the parcel that use the, the most water, meaning they contributed more to the penalty, will bear a larger share of those penalties. Our staff recommendation is for the consideration and recommendation to the Board of Directors to adopt a resolution for a farm unit annual changes policy. Thank you.
Thank you, Letitia. Do you have any questions, comments? Do we have any public comment on this item? Come on in.
So right here on the item five, it says that farm units are the primary unit for allocations, not parcels. It doesn't say not parcels, but it says farm units are the primary unit for allocations. So when the credit system started, basically, if you look at it from a renter's point of view, which I am a renter, the farm unit is several parcels, in my case, from various owners that I put together and I manage as a whole. So the GSA is incentivizing people to look at things on, on, try and get a water balance, you know, use the most effective you know, use of your water, most efficient, efficient use of your water. So from a renter's perspective, this will never allow you to gain any kind of extra, extra credits because all of the allocations will end up going back to the owner's parcel. So when it says that, like, for example, the farm units carryover that use less, so the ones that basically you save more water on, you're going to attribute more credits back to them. In my case, that doesn't make any sense at all, and it actually disincentivizes the, the majority of the GSA's purpose. So we manage, I, I have a whole farm unit with, with several pieces, many, many parcels. Some are larger, some are small, forty acres or fourteen acres all the way up to five hundred acres, okay? So I take the amount of water that I have, I look at all my parcels, I take the amount of water that I have. Factor in the permanent crops, take that amount of water out. Then I look at the wells, we're in a certain, we're in an area on the west side where there's subsidence. We have a bland of deep and shallow wells in our area. So the next thing I do is I look at the deep wells. Okay, well, let's stay away from the deep wells because they cause subsidence. Let's stay away from anything that is going to be near any kind of domestic impact. Let's use the shallow wells. So I'm looking at the majority of this map, this parcel map, and I'm saying, okay, these are going to be the ones that we need to let out. Coincidentally, obviously, those are the ones that save the most water credit. So in my case, proportionally, the water that I've saved to use on shallow wells at great investment to our business. We won't be able to use those any longer, it will go back to the landowner. It will go back to a deep water area with high subsidence in that area. So it's almost disincentivizing if you're trying to, you know, knock the parcels out that are going to be the least efficient and the most impactful on the rest of the community, now we're going to take these credits and reward them back to those parcels. That doesn't make sense to me, and I think that there's got to be a better solution for that. I realize that this is mostly for, you know, this is, this is all for, for things without leases or things that aren't spelled out. But again, starting this, farm units were the primary unit for allocations. So when I rented irrigated acres, I'm literally buying the allocation for those acres that year because I can't farm it without the allocation. That's what I'm, you know, farming in our, in our county is going to have to take a different view. It's not necessarily the ground anymore, it's actually the allocation that's going to be important. Because we're all going to be probably farming half of our ground. So the allocation from one side of the farm is going to have to go to the other side of the farm to sustain it. So essentially, in my situation, by not contributing to subsidence, by saving a tremendous amount of water, by paying for full irrigated acres and not pumping the water in order to sustain our farm and keep our permanent crops viable, I'll be losing all the credits for several years when we literally dryland. I'll be losing all the credits for several years when we literally dryland half the farm in order to save those credits. So when we're talking about, excuse me, a five-minute discussion, like, this is my business, my life, and, you know, an ad hoc committee or something that could go over these policies, it would be very impactful to the rest of us instead of just a five-minute conversation on, well, that kind of seems fair. Because there's a lot of us out here that have written leases, that have dealt with leases, that have been farming and know a lot of the nuances. And I understand that things need to be tied back to a parcel in order to get penalties. I'm not in the penalty situation. I'm trying to stay away from that completely, hence I'm saving the water. But if you're in a penalty situation, as a renter, I still get a property tax bill from the county. I still have an assessment that I have to pay for the property that we have, the equipment and whatnot. That can certainly be leaned, just like anything else can. So if it's talking about going back to the parcel to get the money because that's where you have something, sure, I still have to pay property taxes. It certainly financially bankrupt me by leaning my whole business. So, you know, these are things to consider and I implore you to at least stick with the farm units where the primary units for allocations and not tie it to the parcels retroactively. If that's the way that, you know, the board sees fit to go forward, I understand that. But, you know, basically, since we've been trying to get the credits together, you know, our lives have been going on. We've still been farming. We've still had to figure all these things out and, you know, go through the process. And, you know, I was really trying to be proactive. I've been a part of this whole thing the whole time, and I'm here, you know, should be harvesting. It's like the ones that the ones that have ideas and a dog in the fight should be coming up with some of these policy discussions. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Next, please.
Hi again. My name is Michelle Lascoydi, and I have difficulty with the farm unit concept. And also, first of all, I would like, if you could, Stephanie, to point me where this Advisory Committee recommendation is written somewhere of where the farm unit concept originally started in 2020, please. That would, I'd really appreciate that. But besides that, the farm unit concept that we're left with today in 2025 is what we have all been working with, those of us that are in the white area in the Madera Basin. And in any kind of economic construct, if you are deciding the construct or the governance for what is being governed, then if you begin to start to break it down or drill down further and divide it up, you are departing from that concept. So if we were comfortable with the farm unit concept, those are how we've been making our decisions. We might be following something somewhere again because of the health of the aquifer, the age of the permanent crop. There's a myriad of things that go into those decisions. And then to attach an allocation or attach something in a purely, in my opinion, without reason, an APN within the farm unit is very much of a huge departure. Alternatively, one could ask or give the largess to the manager of the farm unit, should there be some sale or some change or something, how they would, how they would divide up the carryover credit. Because exactly how Larkin spoke of, they have the knowledge and know the intricacies of what is happening in their farm unit. So thank you for listening. I appreciate it.
Thank you, Michelle.
Noah Lopez-Mawa. I'll preface the comment just by saying that, given that this agenda was posted Friday afternoon and holiday weekend, unavoidable with the scheduling, understandable. But generally, Mawa, we try to talk to a lot of our members before coming to a policy recommendation. That was not as possible. And so this is primarily based on conversations with a few of our board members and past conversations about this issue. But Mawa generally supports the framework of this policy because it's meant, at least it seems like it's meant to provide flexibility to the landowners and growers, right? If a grower wants to work out a lease agreement with a lesor, or less he wants to work out a lease agreement with a lesor, or two landowners want to work out a lease agreement amongst themselves, or an agreement amongst themselves during the sale of a property, this should allow for whatever terms of that agreement they decide on to be implemented by the GSA. And so we support the idea of having as much flexibility. It seems like that's what this policy is aimed at doing. We understand that absent some sort of agreement, you need to have some default, and then a volumetric approach seems fair, right? It seems to be the most logical path forward. One note, though, on this. We think that the county should avoid at all costs being the arbitrator of agreements. I think we all know that lawyers get paid a lot of money, right, to write agreements, and they get paid even more money to argue about the agreements they've written, and agreements can be interpreted in a lot of ways. And so we think that the county, it would be fraught with danger to put the county in a position to be interpreting and arbitrating agreements and leases and what exactly was meant in these leases regarding penalties and carryover. And so with that in mind, I think there's a couple safeguards. We want to continue to, we want to support the idea of this flexibility, but we should maybe implement some safeguards to avoid this situation where you end up with two arguing growers coming and saying, well, the lease agreement says that I get the carryover, and now it says I get the carryover, right? What would probably be most helpful here is if the county developed some sort of carryovers/penalties agreement worksheet, right? That both parties or all the parties involved in this transaction of carryover and penalties would fill out, would clearly articulate, you know, how the penalties are to be distributed or how the carryovers to be distributed. Both parties would sign it and provide it to the GSA. Attached to this worksheet could be the actual lease agreement as an amendment. But we think that having some sort of worksheet that articulates very clearly what, how penalties under carryover are to be distributed would be helpful and would avoid putting the county in this weird position of trying to interpret agreements. And then the second suggestion along those lines is that anytime, whether it be through this worksheet process or whether it be just through the standard volumetric approach, anytime that carryover or penalties are distributed between multiple parties, that notice is sent via mail from the GSA to the involved parties. And that would just keep everybody aware. There would be no surprises. But we think that those two practices would really help kind of insulate the county from being in this weird position. Again, I think that the intention of this policy, and there's obviously lots of things to be worked out, but I think the intention of the policy to provide as much flexibility to growers to work out the terms of agreements amongst themselves. And so if a lessy wants to keep all the carryover from all the parcels that they're managing for different lessors and be able to distribute that amongst their management, it seems like this policy is meant to allow that, and so we support that kind of flexibility. So again, appreciate it and would suggest those two safeguards. And perhaps County Counselor Stephanie has insight into how the county would avoid being put in this position of having to kind of interpret agreements and what that would look like. Thank you.
Thank you, Noah. Do we have anyone else? Public comment? Do we have any online? None online. I'll close public comment and bring it back.
Yeah, I was just gonna, I guess, pull back a little bit here, based on some of the comments we've received. And I'm hopeful, Stephanie, maybe we can start with where this came from as far as like, obviously, there was an issue or something the county wasn't able to accommodate that, you know, preempted us to try to create some more flexibility in what we're doing here. And then looking forward, if you can kind of speak to how you envision this rolling out. I think we had some comments about retroactive and that kind of stuff. Obviously, there's some concerns, so hopefully we can kind of speak to some of that.
Sure. Thank you. I appreciate that. And those were some helpful comments. We have had a couple of people approach us this year related to activities in the past and ask for us to distribute credits in ways that we don't typically distribute them. And as Letty introduced the policy, you heard that this is really intended, if someone has a lease or a sales agreement or any other agreement that is clear, we can follow that agreement. And we've had a considerable amount of time spent kind of talking with legal counsel and making sure that that is okay. So we really would like to follow other people's agreements. Where the volumetric practice comes into effect is either for penalties. So this is formalizing a practice that we already do. If your farm unit is in a penalty tier, and we have a more detailed version of a presentation, but there was a fair amount of math. If you're in a penalty tier, we can attribute a certain amount to that APN and one APN rather than another APN that might be in the farm unit that doesn't have a penalty. So again, the request came from growers to do something that was a little bit different than our typical policy, and so we've been trying to develop this. And it has come to your committee before, you'll recall, Supervisor Wamhoff was sitting in for Supervisor Gonzalez, and I said something to the effect of, I really want no part of arbitrating disagreements between growers. We just need to lay out what the policy is, and then we follow it. Does that answer your question, Supervisor Director? Sorry.
Apologies. Yeah, I think the follow-up question, I think one of the concerns that was raised is what about agreements that aren't in place? What about those that didn't anticipate a change of this nature that are concerned about the negative impacts of what this, unintended consequences of what this could create? Because I think what I'm hearing is like, hey, I've been a good faith actor, doing the things I'm supposed to be doing. Now I'm concerned that I'm no longer protected if things go sideways on me and I'm going to lose my credits. So I mean, obviously, we don't want that to happen. And so what can we do to make sure that those unintended consequences are tied up? Is this an instance where maybe we should bring it back next month, or is this something that you kind of anticipated?
I do think it's possible to bring it back with a worksheet from next month. But I also think that there may be disagreements between growers that are existing and that may want the county to arbitrate them. And of course, that's really not our job. Our job is to adopt policies, follow the policy. So I think the workshop idea could, sorry, worksheet idea could be pretty helpful. And that would give us a basis of looking at, you know, making sure that the contract translates to the math. And that's one thing that's come up in looking at contracts is obviously they're all written all differently and some are more clear than others. So we can bring it back and look at a worksheet. We also have a longer presentation. That's the one I mentioned has math, but I think it makes the volumetric apportionment super clear. So we'll come back with this item if that's the direction.
Yeah, I'd like to see that and incorporate those comments, just so it's spelled out much more clearer.
We can do that.
Thank you.
Any motion for that?
Madam Director, it was a recommendation to adopt a resolution or suggest that adoption to the Board of, the full Board of Directors, but since that's not the vote being taken and there's just direction, you don't need, you can just leave it as a non-voting item. It'll be recorded as such.
Okay, thank you very much. Let me find the next item.
The next item-
Thank you, because I lost my-
Yeah, no problem. Is consideration and recommendation to the Board of Directors to adopt a resolution establishing the 2026-2040 GSP-based allocations for the Madera County Groundwater Sustainability Agencies in all three sub-basins. That's Madera, Chauchilla, and Delta Mendota Sub Basin. And there's some language about Sequa being exempt from this proposed action. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good afternoon, Madam Chair, members of the Board of Directors, Stephanie and Agnes, and ready to share screen. Thank you. Okay. What is before you today is something that already exists in three separate board adopted documents. Those are all groundwater sustainability plans. One in the Madera Sub Basin, the joint GSP, one in the Chauchilla Sub Basin, the Chauchilla GSP, and one in the Delta Mendota Sub Basin GSP. Each of those has an allocation framework and ramp down that is 2% for the first five years of transition water reduction and then 6% for the remaining 15 years. And I'll just read the Madera one, but the Chauchilla and Delta Mendota are very similar. Madera County plans to gradually phase in demand management between now and 2040. Starting in 2020 and continuing through 2025, average annual groundwater pumping will be reduced by 2% of the total demand reduction amount per year for a total cumulative reduction of 10% by 2025. Groundwater pumping will be reduced by 6% per year, starting in 2026 and continuing through 2020, 2040. So that's what's in three documents that your board has already adopted. And you'll recall that this strategy of having what's essentially a slope, a step function where you have one slope for the first five years and then another slope for the last 15 came from your Advisory Committee in 2018 and 2019. So these are the existing tables for allocations that are published in our kind of annual update. You can see that in 2025, in the Madera Sub Basin, you're looking at about 27 inches. In Chauchilla, in 2025, you're looking at about 25 inches. And in the Delta Mendota, you're looking at about 19 inches. That's inches of evapotranspiration of applied water. So we do have proposed allocations right now to take a look at. And we have extra copies of the resolution that includes them up there if people would like to take a look closer at the table. A couple of things have changed in the realm of fine tuning. For example, in the Madera Sub Basin, the base sustainable yield is six inches. But because the number of acres have gone from an estimate of 85,000 to 88,000, the reallocated sustainable yield is decreasing slightly from 6.7 to 6.3. It's in the document that looks like a resolution. Should be, yep, you got it. So in the Madera Sub Basin, you see a slight change in the reallocated sustainable yield. In the Chauchilla Sub Basin, you see that basically things have remained the same. The estimate of 38,000 acres within farm units was pretty accurate. So nothing is changing, and the base sustainable yield and reallocated numbers remain about the same. In both allocations, the transition water ramps down to zero. It does not rely on projects to get there. Projects would bring in extra water that could then be- Projects would bring in extra water that could then be reallocated. Or if an individual grower paid for projects, then that water is going into his or her account. It's not being reallocated to the sub-basin. But this proposed allocation does essentially the heavy lifting of groundwater sustainability over a timeline of 2020 to 2040. The Delta Mendota table had some interesting things happen. Our original estimate for irrigated acres or acres within farm units was 2,100. As we fine tuned our mapping, it turned out a lot of those acres that were showing as plants were plants, but they were riparian vegetation, native vegetation along the San Joaquin River, which is where the Delta Mendota Sub Basin County GSA represents. So you will see that this allocation actually went up substantially. The reallocated sustainable yield going from 2.6 inches ETAW to 9.3. So these are the tables that reflect the allocation structure and discussion in the GSPs. We've had a number of people request these tables for their own planning. So what we would like to do is adopt a resolution with your full Board of Directors that has these tables in them. Now, there are a fair amount of interesting policy considerations, which your board could have some very meaty discussions on. What I would suggest is have the discussion in October and November. Once you have these adopted as a backstop, so that people have these for planning purposes. For example, staff has brought the larger penalty of $500 per acre foot a couple of times to the board. It may be worth looking at again. There are other ways you can structure an allocation. For example, the people who are in a penalty tier, we have a few that are repeat offenders. Other GSAs will not let people overuse years in a row without taking away that water from the next year. So there, there's a fair amount that we can do in terms of this discussion. But I'm not bringing it today because I think it needs this adopted as a backstop. And this is already in the GSPs. So happy to have that discussion in October. We also have a fair amount of quality assurance, quality control going on, looking at how we've done in reference to the allocations. As I mentioned earlier, we can't use AeroWatch for some people, Land IQ for some people, and meters for some people. We need to use one measurement method. And so the one that is freely available is Open ET. And we're having that work done in the Madera, Chauchoa, and Delta Mendota Sub Basins and can show you how we've done in reference to the allocation. Happy to do that next month, but this is the approach that is already in your board adopted GSPs. Happy to take questions.
Director McCully.
And just when you're providing that snapshot, or is, would you anticipate, I mean, looking at carryover water? And I think we've talked about this in the past and, you know, personally, I'm a little concerned that as we, you know, have a bunch of wet years in a row, we have all this carryover water that is going from year to year that at some point in time, you know, that that could just compound issues when we have a dryish year. So I'm concerned about that and want to make sure, you know, that when we're looking at this picture, that that is included. I think we would be short sighted if we weren't.
I certainly agree with that. And to my knowledge, we are the only GSA that does not have a decay factor or a time that the carryover has to be used within factor. But we'd like to do a survey of some other GSAs and see if they have any good ideas that we could apply here as well.
Okay. And then my other question is in regards to sustainable yield. We've heard in the past about projects. Obviously, projects never materialized like the board anticipated they would some time ago. So I think what you were saying in your in your presentation was that those projects have no effect on the sustainable yield, right? The 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 projects bring in new water theoretically. And then that water would be allocated based on how those projects are developed or materialized. So that never included in sustainable yield, but.
That that is correct. The allocation does not take into effect projects and it ramps down to zero regardless of projects. But projects add water and I would call that the the new water, not necessarily sustainable yield. A third category of water other than sustainable yield and transition water to the system.
Okay. That's it. Yeah, thank you.
At this time, I'll open it up for public comment. Come on up.
Hi, Mark Peters. Thank you. You know, I'm gonna show my ignorance here. It's been going, the allocations have been going down in the Madera Sub Basin at 0.3 inches per year. And then to go forward to get to 2040. And it was going to start at a faster rate beginning in 2026. We knew that. And so you just say one inch a year and you get to 12.1 and the new number is 12.3. I'm not arguing with that, but but that's at my level, and I pay a lot of attention to this, what's going on. Never did I see, and I know it exists, this is my ignorance, I know that it exists, it must, that transitional water takes a big drop down next year. And so the allocation drop next year is not one inch, it's 1.9 inches. And again, I'm sure if I had thought hard and found that, but I think about it all the time and I never saw it coming. And I'm thinking 26.1 and now it's 25.2 and it's right in my face. And nobody told me until September 2nd that next year is going to drop 1.9 inches. That's not good. Again, somebody could say, Mark, if you looked at the data close, it'd be there. I looked closely. That's that was just hidden in there. Sorry. Thanks.
Thank you. Anyone else? Noah, come on in.
Noah Lopez-Mawa. Like Stephanie said, we know we've seen this coming, the 2% and then 6% spelled out in the GSP, spelled out in the submitted GSP revision. One question, though, on this, on adopting tables all the way out to 2040. You'll recall that the previous table that was adopted in 2020 or 21 was only for 2020 through 2025. This table would adopt allocation all the way out through 2040. And I I would ask a question, you know, what what are the factors that might change this number in this allocation? Because we understand that there's there's all sorts of numbers that go into figuring out that final total total allocation number there in the second to last column. And what what our understanding is, is that, you know, actual groundwater conditions on the ground and what what's actually being, was actually happening in the in the GSA might affect the allocation. Obviously, the the GSP revision being approved and then subsequent revisions being approved might affect the allocation. And then Stephanie, you know, mentioned a couple of other things that affected the allocation. Here you saw that 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 total number for irrigated acreage, I guess I'm I'm looking at it and you guys aren't. But in Exhibit A in that table, looking at Madera Sub Basin, that total number for irrigated acreage, and I think that's a bit of a misnomer because really, you could maybe call it enrolled acreage. Not all of that irrigated acreage is actually irrigated. It's just the acres that are receiving an allocation. That number changed and so it changed our our re-SY number for the going forward. And then you you brought it up, or Director McCully, new water, right? Project water, potential watering brought in in as part of the the projects in the GSP. But all could change this allocation number. And so just a question, is it necessary to adopt tables all the way out through 2040? Or is it prudent to continue doing what we did before, which is adopting tables kind of in these five-year blocks and then revising it as time or as necessary? You know, along with that GSP revision, along with our annual reports, along with looking at groundwater conditions, along with new water, with any changes, even though we don't anticipate it, any changes in that enrolled acreage? Just is it, does it make sense to kind of to to adopt these tables on a five-year basis and review them? Maybe even annually, instead of adopting them at 24, to understand the 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 need and desire of growers to have a long-term planning schedule? And I think this is useful for that. But as a as a set in stone allocation, we might be putting ourselves a little bit ahead of where we where we want to be. But just a thought and I'll leave it at that. Thank you.
Anyone else? Do we have anyone online? Yes, we have one online. Devin. Go ahead. Go ahead, Devin.
Good afternoon. This is Devin Aviles with Agarroll Cooperative. Regarding this, as mentioned by the previous speakers, you know, some of these changes are are significant. And I know that four tenths of an inch, that change in the reallocated sustainable yield, it may not seem like a lot, but when.
Hi, Devin, can you start over? Please, 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 please.
Okay, you want me to start over?
Yes, please.
Okay, am I, are you going to get feedback or can you hear me now?
Yes.
Okay, Devin Aviles, Agarroll Cooperative. The comments just, some of these changes are significant. I know that four tenths of an inch of reallocated sustainable yield water, it may not seem like a lot, but in theory, it's it's big when you start thinking about the changes that are coming with that first year of 6%. I know Stephanie mentioned that, you know, some of this, there might be some bigger meat on this to chew. And I I agree, especially from the standpoint that, given the economics of what's going on in agriculture right now and looking at these step-down periods. We always said when we were looking at these allocations years ago that we would try to be as flexible as we could with the growers, knowing what the end goal is. I realize that the 6% over the next five years equals 30% that we need to get to. But maybe as part of the broader discussion, when we get to October, is we might be able to consider maybe because we had some of these adjustments that weren't planned for, that maybe we look at decreasing the percentage for maybe the next two years, 26, 27, with a caveat, knowing that we have to catch up in the years after that. So we still need to get to 30% because I know this not only impacts the allocation, but we also have to be careful about what is presented in the GSP. So I just think that as part of this broader discussion, that we may want to consider some of some of the changes to the allocation. Thank you. I appreciate it.
Thank you, Devin. Do we have anyone else online? No more online. Okay, I'll close public comment. Director McCully, you have anything?
Yeah. But it's my understanding that the Board of Directors and the board would at the whole will reconsider allocations annually, right? That's that's the plan here while we're putting this, memorializing this. It's not necessarily set in stone, so to speak, but it is there as a guiding document. But again, the board will have an opportunity, you know, as irrigated acreage or or land in production or or whatever you want to call it, you know, fluctuates, we'll be looking at allocations as we look at our our snapshot as was referenced. Hey, why are we not looking at this? And we'll have an opportunity again to look at those allocations and say, yeah, no, we we can, you know, smooth out the glide path a little bit here. Or, hey, you know, we're heading for a cliff here and we need to make action. Because, I mean, we're hearing it on both sides of the aisle, right? And so I think the most prudent thing for us is to get that snapshot, review this annually. So I just want to make sure that that is still the intention from staff is to provide that opportunity, annual review, to make sure that we're we're getting this right.
Sure, we're happy to review it annually. I think the plans were at least every five years with the GSP, but happy to do that annually. I would emphasize, people have asked for this through 2040. And that's really the intent, is give them what they're asking for. And then you have the ability to go back and revisit them and take a crack at some of the meteor policy issues.
Hey, thank you, Stephanie. You have a motion?
Who to approve?
And I'll second. Director McCully?
Yes.
Director Gonzalez?
Yes.
Vote passes 2-0. Thank you. Next item. Director's report.
I need one minute to find the page in my notebook. Sorry. Okay, we have begun reviewing the subsidence best management practices. And you'll recall, we changed this meeting actually to allow people to go next week. It's a meeting in Clovis and their water resource specialist should reach, should have reached out to them. So I would expect to see some growers there to hear from the state. The best management practices document for subsidence will probably be one of the things that drives conversations about allocations in the future. We've also edited a small farmer flyer with UCA NR. Participated in some activities related to EB 1413. One thing that I think has changed and was alluded to at the beginning of the meeting. We did learn on Friday that one of our partners in the Madera Sub Basin, an additional partner would like to fund only domestic wells in their service area. That's, this began with Root Creek. And then it continued with New Stone and then Gravelly Ford and then Madera Irrigation District. So as you know, we have a grant that's paying for development of rules. There are some key principles that it looks like agencies agree on. And we can move ahead with funding a program within the Madera County GSA. It does not seem to change the economics significantly. But we will check in as the program evolves. We'll also have draft rules next month for that in the Madera Sub Basin. And I think also in the Delta Mendota Sub Basin. I think that's it. Anything? Okay. Question?
All right. Well, with that, we will stand adjourned. Thank you very much, everyone.